All right, we are gonna call to order the City Council Committee of the Whole at five thirty-three. Go to the order. Does anyone have anything for the go to the order?
I do. Let's see, I want to talk just a little bit about economic development and there's due to my absence and other things. There were very little progress on maybe to get it and brainstorming ideas and bringing those back together. But my little question is, I wanted to make sure I understood what the profit to be positive, set aside the money, you know, initially targeting towards economic development items. We have the nonprofit grant process in place, I believe. And in addition to that, you know, I think there's a number of ideas to be both short term or long term. But is the process then those ideas would be vetted by the by the committee and then brought back to the council for approval? And that approval would constitute a bill, is that?
Yeah, so currently we have taken of the two hundred and fifty for the Biennium, so I'm in twenty-five each year. Fifty thousand of that each year for the nonprofit grants and that's in process, we extended the deadline. And then we sent Rita, who you only sent an email to our nonprofit community, letting me know we're posting and that it would be extended. For everything else, the remainder of the pool of money, we went through one prioritization exercise. My thought would be that when council and subcommittee does another round of prioritization, we would bring it back to this group, do kind of a similar exercise, like a dot exercise, where you all put all of your ideas out, let council kind of prioritize around it. Staff will figure out the relative costs of each one and then you all would make decisions on which of the ideas you want funded and then we would go from there.
Okay, yeah, and the rest staff will obviously would be, so that that's important, one point for it.
Yeah, like last time what we did was on this side, council kind of put ideas down and then using dots to prioritize which of the ideas they liked best. On this side of the room, staff did something similar but said, hey, here are items that may require staff over. And here are things where we'd have to go out to bin and kind of listed some of the logistical challenges or opportunities per each and then somewhere in the middle would probably be a set of ideas that council would wanna fund and we would go out and work to deliver.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good, good.
I mean, we can do something different, that was just kind of the process that.
Yeah, no, I think I think that's a good process. Keep keeping in mind that staff's involvement and time is is new, I'm not fun this. Let's see, as far as nonprofits, we have actually talked with some folks, has anyone applied yet?
Not that I've heard.
Okay, did you, in mourning?
Yeah.
You needed to talk with them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Really good meetings.
Good, good, yeah, yeah, that's one of the, of course, that'll be, that'll be a nonprofit. I think we can target that for nonprofits and and that'd be something we still wanna try to be going with. And just FYI, what Morgan Henley, who, you know, there's a lot of music production in the valley here. Hey, we need an idea while that, about having like a Saturday music crawl in Duval. So crawl is what he uses his term, but essentially it's, you know, a band that, you know, one restaurant, then another, then another through the afternoon. And of course, we already have the Saturday evening music at the Tattletale. I think so, that would probably be the last, you know, I think, but but instead of just that one Saturday evening, it'd be an afternoon kind of, you know, kind of kind of thing, so. And I think that would be a terrific boost for people and, you know, bringing even more. Morgan, especially on a Saturday, because you guys know how much highway traffic we get, right? Lots of motorcycle clubs and and car rallies and and just people driving, driving, driving.
Yeah, and that's one good thing to remember is that the committee where you all are working to prioritize different events will have to stay formed and standing so you can also review and approve any grant applications.
Exactly.
I know one nonprofit organization that's in the valley that is not in Duval is has inquired and is considering putting in an application and part of that review would be, you know, ensuring that it meets qualifications of bringing tourism or economic development activity to Duval. But we allow that for the human tourism grants, you know, at some point we value organizations and other nonprofits applied and so long as they can prove a threat to, you know, the city of Duval and serving the residents here. You know, those the grant can approve, so hopefully we'll get some in.
Yeah, council member, I just wanted to add one thing onto this thing. And so in Ellensburg, there was an event that got started a long time ago and it became really big called Jazz in the Valley. If you talk to Morgan, again, it sounds similar to what he described, basically a bunch of venues, there's schedule, here's who's playing here and it was focused on jazz, you know, so it doesn't have to be that. But it, we brought in a lot of money and a lot of people from outside and it just grew. So it started really small, you know, probably as some sort of crawl type thing and then over the years it just exploded. It was really big and a huge income economic driver for the restaurants, but yeah, something like that would be really amazing.
Yeah, and speaking of which, I'm I'm sure most of us here saw, you know, the crowd we had at Duval Days. And I specifically was just kind of keeping an eye on the shops and man, every shop, restaurants, everything was hot on on Saturday, so it was great, you know, a great time for that.
Yeah, council member, yeah, I I just wanted to let everyone know that I had gotten some feedback from one of the nonprofits that they hadn't been aware of the the grant program, which I know things have been crazy and so I'm thinking for extending the deadline. And I had a conversation encouraging someone to look to apply and it sounds like I I went into North West Art Center and it sounds like council member Supple, you contacted them or potentially.
I've been talking to Paramore, director. She, last thing I heard from her was that they, well, they're struggling to get enough volunteers to support the September date. And then their last board meeting, they said, hey, we just don't have enough time to put everything together, even with the grant money between June and September. So they're 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 planning on having one next year, but not this year.
Okay, yeah, I was curious. But I love.
The Duval Art Center is just.
Oh, oh, this year, yeah, yeah, okay.
I think it's for some kind of like art and wine walk type thing.
Yes, the Art and Wine Walk, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Which is, it's been a couple of years since you've had it.
Right.
Yes.
And we did apply for and receive a Port of Seattle grant that was also meant to, well, the the majority of the grants meant to support the chamber. And one of the events at the chamber was planning on using the money for support was at Art and Wine Walk. But Director Thomas, you can join in here. My understanding is we're not, I mean, we might not receive the money for that purpose.
Yeah, they're they're not sure, right now, I have a meeting with them next week, they're not gonna be able to likely do that. So we're also gonna maybe connect with DFA to see if maybe they could do it. It might be too late at this point because they're usually in August. But we're gonna try, otherwise we can either try and work with the, you know, the port to put it somewhere else or we just won't, we won't receive the money for that.
Have we ever thought of having something in September? We have already a letter in September.
I think, you know, it would be up to DFA or the chamber to do that. I think, you know, there's just a lot of newness within some of our organizations, there aren't enough volunteers, so they're really struggling, I think they're gonna be rebuilding, I see, you know, but we do have a meeting with them next.
Okay, great, and so I actually have something else to bring up. Okay, I had sent an email about this, but on social media, there was a GoFundMe that was posted for an Eagle Scout project at Taylor Park for the the shelter there, it's gotten pretty old and I think there was a project to sort of rehabilitate it and someone contacted me via email and was asking, you know, how does this work? That seems like a maintenance item, is there, you know, why are we requiring a volunteer to do something that seems like maintenance? And I just shared that, that, you know, this is a pretty common thing that we do, where we provide these opportunity if an Eagle Scout or other group wants to volunteer to do some of the work. And a new question was asked, do we have some kind of financial partnership with them? Are we contributing staff time and what the scope of the project was? But I think that question, Diane, maybe we prepared something, I don't know.
Well.
No, I don't know.
I do, but I I just. So Stephen Shesky, coworkers, so they approached us on some opportunities and they provided their own kind of thoughts and we thought it was a very neat, it's significantly dilapidated, it probably shouldn't be taken, though it's, we can, anyone was. So it's great that it's getting rehabilitated, he has his permit in and there is some information in the C E R report on Skeen is his name, so. Yeah, he has an on-pass for financial partnership, he's expecting to raise it all. Usually we participate five hundred to two thousand dollars depending on the size and scale of project. We use the various projects and scouts flying in the early time, so we have ten grand a year, we subsidize it by the Russell.
Did we waive the permit?
No, I haven't.
Does he pay?
Yeah, he hasn't paid yet, or paid yet, he's done the design, he's an amazing cat, I think our building inspector and reviewer James, like, this is better than nine out of ten professional seminars. He did a fantastic job, it's, I don't know if they didn't see it or not, yeah. We used to have kind of a list of projects, we would kind of use some of that as staff and then when we had a committee, just put some things on list, we don't have a lot of kids coming, he's the only one who's come in the last three years. So, nice kid, senior at Cedar Crest, so he's just been today, saying hello and wasn't sure you got his permit yet, I said, check your junk mail, I was just showing him. So yeah, there's no need or request or requirement, you can, we let them dream their own thing up because we've had plenty that come to us, like, can you give me your budget? Wouldn't really like that either, but trying to be helpful because they're giving a great service, so.
Great, anything else? I have one quick thing, I have sent an email to you all a little while back and then I sent a reminder. There is a link to like an Excel spreadsheet and I kind of laid out the links through the first of August and it helps me at least because I know we're canceling the one on July fourth and then August first is National Night Out, so it helps if you know, like, there's one that I'm gonna be going for so we can sort of just look at this for the summer and see how our month's vacations line up to make sure we have form. So if you haven't had a chance, hit that and you can just fill it out really quick, if you don't mind.
Yeah, there, I mean, this may have been discussed, but I know, you know, when we were preparing for the parade Saturday, Sarah Perry's aide came over to us and sort of talked about some of the opportunities with art.
Right, yeah.
Did you bring that up at all in terms of, I don't know what the next action on that, but I think they were really looking to engage or the cities or.
You know, I thought they were gonna reach out, so, but did they or, they did, okay. So I'm in contract with one of Sarah Perry's aides. The first thing they want us to do is have the mayor appoint someone to, and I grabbed my notes here, there's a name for it. It's hard to remember, I think.
There was something on that, I mean, it was art related, but it was not specific, it was in terms of how it can be applied, so there was some.
Yeah, that is, it is the creative district.
But it's the period.
It's the creative district, yeah. Yeah, so we need to appoint a member to the creative districts. It is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar in-kind commitment from the city of Duval, either budget or in, I mean, staff time or some support that is equivalent to that amount. But we get back five thousand dollars in some form of infusion into the arts community. So, or here in Duval. So I'm meeting with them, we're kind of playing email tag probably next week, but it starts with appointing someone to that creative district and then I think we get some kind of designation as being a creative district, we get a label from the city participating. It is not a terribly easy process, apparently it is, it's very paperwork heavy and they have agreed to help us walk through because the our appointee will probably be a little challenged with some of the paperwork requirements, but we're gonna do it, we're here to support it, so.
Yeah, and one of the things they had said was creative districts look completely different from city to city. Just depends on what's implemented in Duval here and it might look, really should look different than other cities. And what was the other thing they had said, because I was a little unclear that Matt, we were getting access. So it's more like they are helping provide resources because there's a lot of untapped money, it seems. And so they're trying to help direct more people to those funds, to find them, to use them for unique projects, to make those districts. So, yeah, that's interesting with the paperwork.
I understand we do have ten thousand dollars appropriate for public art in this Biennium, so I think we would already meet the match.
Yeah, that was really, I just wanted to, you know, it sounded like an opportunity and there was some getting the boundaries, you know, in terms of being the concrete, or I mean, even how you like, and I feel which is, you know, so they can apply in really unique ways than we've been, so.
I forgot about that, that was what I got really excited about too because she had, or he had mentioned walkability and sidewalk and stuff.
Just wanna make sure we, everybody's followed up on, so it sounded like it happened.
Yeah, and actually what would really help, I think, for both the mayor and I, is if you have folks in the community that you think would be interested in being appointed, please let me know. So maybe easier to start with the list of folks instead of trying to pull one from there, so.
Nothing to do, so they want a community member.
It's to be a community member and I clarified not a staff member, they said not a staff member. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to review of regular meeting agenda. Basically, just a reminder, if there's something on consent that you have a question on that would mean you would need to pull it, that might be easily answered so that we could keep a notch on consensus possible. Does anyone have anything that they're thinking about on those or pretty good to go? All right.
Oh, Mike, the, I'm anticipating here, but he's.
Can you answer without picking up?
Yeah, 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 that's the point, I wanna make sure things stay on consent, yeah. Which item, yeah.
The. Oh, the overlay program, the January 23rd. So I got down that street, one hundred forty-sixth, all the time. I never see any cars parked there, even though the parking strips are in place, is there a is there, are they prohibited, is anybody prohibited from parking there now or do they allow everybody in their mobile home park, find cars closer to their house? I'm feeling the need to park on that street. One hundred forty-seven, one forty-sixth.
So yeah, that that's one, so there is no action item in the packet on that, there's an overlay item, but one forty-second, phase two, there is an action item on a grant, submit all to. Sorry, I'm trying to get on one, but, and my packet will again, but there is a grant, submit all the same program that keeps on the C D V G, Community Development Board grant, so it's one forty-second. We are not prohibiting, we work hard for the communication and outreach process to make sure, hey, we need your cars out of here, but we are like parking, obviously, as you can see, so it's allowed to park north side. No one has parked it, again, we tried to work really hard with the mobile home park manager. And I think they either created spots inside because there has not been a car parked out there since it was opened. It's crazy, so because they have cars out all our time and I think they they made some space inside and like you said, probably just easier. We haven't had any questions, calls, complaints or anything about it from the mobile home park manager since we were finished, so. I know, no question for you, but yes, in the packet is, we need approval to apply for grants. That item is budgeted, but we still have to formally get council action for the grant body and we're moving to phase two and that is the last accepted area of town to receive C D D funds. So we're kind of out of that pool currently and they have extended our previous what do you call, income survey to that phase.
Um, you know, like when you're when you're pricing a house, you have to put footage and that's usually the main driver for the cost of the house. When you're building, constructing a street like one hundred forty-sixth, are there like a rule of thumb, like linear feet, like if it's eight hundred linear feet, you use it, you know, give a rough guess, that's okay, that's gonna be four hundred thousand dollars or so many dollars per linear foot or.
Uh, yeah, there is, there's certainly a rule of thumb, but that project itself has a pretty detailed cost estimate that's based on the current, the current project's valuation.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not questioning, I just.
We try not to guess, we've tried to estimate in the past, we have a couple of tools at our disposal, like most of the C I Ps, C I Ps have a number with them, water systems, water system transportation, but it's always seeming to be off and not always off in the high, but sometimes off in the low or the high. So they're very preliminary numbers, but we, when we know what we're trying to achieve, especially with current data on current projects, we can estimate pretty accurately.
Okay, thank you, so we'll move on to our first discussion item, which is an introduction of some new staff members, the first city in the street. But did they announce something or?
Maybe.
Okay, oh, we're going to have Jason from as well, or honey, Jason has a coach of his little league team and they're in playoffs for something tonight. Uh, we do have Rita and Rita, you might want us up here and we're, it's, we're pretty involved, yeah. Want to, yeah. And so I'd like to introduce Rita from, she is here from, from Paramore. And Rita, I thought you introduced yourself, so council a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, so my name is Rita, I came from the city of Paramore, I was there for about four years. I was the recreation supervisor when I left, but when I first started, I was a rep coordinator and helped bring some recreation things to Paramore. Worked with non-profit agencies and helped cover special events. And previous to that, I also did special network with the city of Burress, so did six citywide special events. Burress Fun Days, I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that, very similar to kind of Duval Days, but it was a Friday, Saturday, vendors, concerts and in parks, so, yeah, I'm excited to be here, it was really fun. I came to Duval Days and helped out, so that was really fun to see, it was pretty packed, so, yeah.
Yeah, from what I understand, Rita, six, they tend to do the thing to do.
Take it to the library parking lot. Yeah, no, it was great, it was fun to see everybody really excited and working together, so, that's good.
And Rita has also started mentoring with Cass on the city taking over all of the logistics and funding for summer stage. So that's the next big lift, where we get this here.
So I think that that'll, the plan is, we sell actually happen this this year. For maybe over seven.
Um, Cass and I are working together, so I'm kind of just chatting with her and helping get some of the things done, so.
Cass is under contract for this.
Oh.
So we have one year transition in this area for twenty twenty-three summer stage.
And the mayor was out there, she had lots of ideas, you could just see the staff being around her, she's probably already talked about some of them, but it'd be great to have resources more.
We're very excited to have you here.
Thanks for joining us at the council chat last time.
Yeah, it was nice, you know, nice to be out in the community and kind of hear what everyone's got to say, so.
And Rita and Jason, I think last meeting, you all have to see the city hall annex, I'm calling Roseford now. And Rita and Jason are downstairs, along with myself, I have some more on Saturday. Thank you, I'm Rita, yeah, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to our next item, which is finance policies. And other than Rita, the little bullets, I'll just pass it over to Cynthia. So the hope for today is to just kind of go through what's outstanding and continue the conversation on what we need to move forward to receive comments, get them in a form that has included all of council and all your thoughts so that we can get them finalized. And so at your, we'll start with purchasing policy. So this will all be uploaded online, but I did it all this morning and so I do want our clerk to worry about doing this while we're getting ready for the council meeting today, so I prepared paper documents today, but again, I'll put them all online. So I have the five jurisdictions that council requested to see information on, I have four. I did not hear about from Carnation yet. So there's Sultan, Snowpalmie, Woodinville and North Bend. So this currently down top has the requested information and then on the back I included the policies for each of those jurisdictions. And again, I'll put them online. So with some, kind of at a high level of the four jurisdictions I heard back from, I did go online and look at Carnation's staff directory, I suspect the upper part of Carnation will be they too do not have a person who is solely designated as a contracts administrator. So the only one who does have a contracts administrator is Woodinville. The other three that I heard back from do not have a contracts administrator. And so for Sultan, I heard back from Will, Ivershop, Snowpalmie, I heard back from Jen Ferguson, their finance director, and from North Bend, I contacted their finance director and heard back from them today. So each of them do it a little different, Sultan, they go through the city clerk, but for Sultan, Snowpalmie and for North Bend, the department directors are vested with some amount of legal review to comply with purchasing policy. And then here in Sultan, I broke them out, Snowpalmie has a pretty extensive list. So the page ten through twelve of the financial management policy, generally speaking, anything over fifty thousand dollars goes to council. And for Woodinville, Woodinville is a city manager jurisdiction. So zero to fifty K goes to the city manager and then generally speaking, anything over fifty K goes to city council. In North Bend, the limits are twenty-five K. Again, all the policies are here, they're all fairly recent. I would also kind of highlight they're all much, much shorter than the Semamish policy that you all have as a template document for Duval that's been modified for Duval's use. Let's see, so Woodinville's policy is updated in twenty twenty-two, Sultan twenty twenty-one, Snowpalmie twenty twenty-two and I think North Bend's is brand new, I'm not expecting them today, yeah, twenty twenty-three, just April eighteen, twenty twenty-three for North Bend. So that's the information, there was also a request from, I think, council member Mercer, for Daniel to kind of talk about the thought process for selecting Semamish. And so Daniel, I'll give you the state for a couple minutes.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing overly complicated, Semamish is a city that our firm is working with right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing overly complicated. So Spanish is a city that our firm is working with right now. And so we're processing them to review and uh work with their council on that policy. It is longer than, you know, your average policy. Um it was very professionally done. There's a lot of work on it. Um and had review uh internally and with council and attorneys after the process. And though in the end, when reviewing it, uh it felt like it would be. Uh going times a lot of really important topics, but in a manner that didn't require too much um. Well, I'm speaking for staff, but I mean, it didn't feel like it required too much extra labor to get through it, but the information was there. You needed to reference it. And I think that's one of the reasons why a lot of it's remains in the policies. It's just really good stuff. Um so I felt like it was uh professional comprehensive and heavily.
Um so from here, the um next thing that I will do is upload the documents that you have here in front of you. And the other outstanding request is to get the original Snowpalmie document and then the version that we are not Snowpalmie, um so managed document. Um do a compare contrast to the policy that we have for you all to consider. Um. Daniel, I will work on that, get that um uh sent out to council. And at this point, the request that I have is to have a conversation about what you all need next. To make suggestions, uh request edits, so that I can bring then. A document involving your suggested edits to council, work through them individually, one by one, and then get a document that would be um. Uh prepared for Duvall.
Any questions?
Question. In terms of process, I knew in the past we kind of went through and we. Voted on each one, similar review in terms of we'll go through our conversation and then the group will decide which ones we want to apply. Uh was a little more lightweight. I didn't know if you had an approach in terms of that final review process in terms of intake, just to. Keep it on track and keep it moving forward.
I mean, that was kind of the thought, something very similar. So we used that approach now, the council procedures with the concession policy. To receive requested edits, create a red line with those requested edits and then. Um I would just facilitate a conversation going one by one for each of them till we got a document that I would bring next. Where you all would be comfortable approving it or not approving it. Any other questions or thoughts?
All right, yeah, we're going to then I'm not giving anything else from that. I don't think so.
Uh okay, so then in this one. Was the investment policy. And so just um as a reminder, we um. Reviewed the investment policy at on the May ninth um panel meeting. Uh got a couple of comments um reflective of the work that had been done initially in the finance admin and administration committee on. What kinds of things would um be in the investment policy. Uh the thing that I took away um was that at some point we would submit. The draft policy to the investment certification program with the Washington Public Treasurers Association. The draft that Dana created is from their template. So I don't know um in terms of process that he would likely to submit the draft. To the Washington Public Treasurers Association, get comments and then bring those back to council. Would be like. Take a look at it, submit comments to me, have me mark it up and submit that markup to the certification program.
I have a question. Is it possible? I mean, I hundred percent want to get this moved forward, but um if we are getting a new finance director, are we thinking that we would maybe get some comments? From that person before we implement or are we thinking we would do this without? That person's involvement?
My hope was to, before the new finance director came, to do some work in getting. Some of these older policies updated and approved, so they could walk in with. Maybe a smaller initial list of things to do. Um because Dan had a pretty good handle on most of these things. So if we could get them. Um if we could get this work done before the new finance director came on board, um. That would be good. Um with that said, I would certainly want the new finance director, depending on. You know, which finance director um eventually comes to Duvall as our permanent finance director. They might have an opinion about um. You know, fund reserve, investment policy. Um we could absolutely take it to council again and adapt it if they see something really glaring. Or something important to add that hadn't been considered.
I just wasn't sure. I don't have any more data yet. I wasn't sure that was unexpected for the process. Yeah.
Other thoughts, questions?
I I would just say, I I don't know if I have a strong opinion on, you know, what you were asking one way or another. Um. Would it, I mean, is it beneficial to wait until it's marked up and then, you know, that that way we get comments on what we've done? Because like. I don't know. It just seems like it would be extra work because you might want to get there. Again, I mean, I don't think we're going to make a major change, but.
Yeah, so the note I took from the May ninth meeting was um some understanding of a question that had come up. In the finance and administration committee that uh the first step of a process is to get their certification. I I looked online today and looked at their certification program. It's not required as like a a first step. It might be more prudent to have you all mark it up, give me an idea of them, and then the markup. To um WPTA and then when I get their comments back, bring it back to you all for final vote. Would be, I think, my preferred process or not the best.
Yeah.
Does that sound good to you, counsel member?
Yeah, I just have a question. You said it came from, it was originated from a template that came from them. Is there any way we can see like? Maybe it's online, but I'm just curious what we might have changed. Compared to their, you know, their template.
Yeah, their template is online. It's on my WPTA. I don't know. It's probably a dot org. I've, I've been on the website before. Yeah. Is everyone else good with that approach as well? Yeah, so.
So we do have an investment policy now.
We do.
Okay. Has it been better to the organization? You, what do you know?
So I can't remember. Uh so between the fund reserve policy and this policy, one is from two thousand eleven. And one is from two thousand. Earlier than that. Um so it's been some time since either of these were amended and finalized by council. So I don't know, two thousand eleven, if that happened or not. Um the current policy, um. Uh if you go uh to the May ninth council meeting, you'll see that they made the um. Quite a bit of work in showing the sections of the policy, the differences in the current policy and the amended policy. The investment policy had quite a few changes, but again, consistent with what the WPTA is recommending now for the policy.
Yeah, there was a bit of funding that was just allowed. There's a review and I didn't see it up on the agenda. And I just didn't sort of upload it from me because I went to review it before this, but. Um but that was some of the, yeah, I don't really discuss that, but that was sort of one of the key pieces of the. Fact that there are potential investment areas that were not no longer listed. And moving that toward. You know, expedition through was probably meant to align that. But since, but at the end of the day, I think what you said. Is whether it's getting the feedback and making the changes, it's kind of. There's going to be a second bite regardless, uh which appears to.
Um what feels like a reasonable time period to get requested suggestions from council? In the summer.
Go ahead.
So I redacted things a little different. So I had like a chart that had. Here are some of the changes that were low impact or changing that were staff recommended. Um so if you go back to your prior council packet, there's a. Um a couple uh PowerPoint slides that I made.
I wonder if anyone can see that. Would you put them up?
Yeah.
I'm embarrassed that I don't remember that.
Um I know our clerk has uh sent us the link to with the presentations. I was gonna.
Okay, maybe I need to relook at that. Okay.
I think, sorry, Mark Thomas, I think that was when you went home, got one confirmation. Well, that would explain why it is.
So there is, yeah, there is a PowerPoint um slide that shows. Kind of the different changes we made from this managed policy. So if we go back and take over. Do you?
Yeah.
Are we good to go on the investment policy then? I didn't hear any other concerns about. Um so. An idea when we might, oh, that's sort of weird. Sorry, I know, I got. Something and I don't remember it. Um so kind of getting back to the original question, timeframe, like how much time would you need to get feedback in? Not much. A week, two weeks? Five months? I'm just kidding.
No, this needs to be your time box, like giving time.
Yeah, yeah, that's another line. Some of us may be procrastinators, so. Like June the Jim thirtieth?
Oh, yeah. That would kind of be, as long as this pass went, split it's out.
Yeah.
My stress level drops dramatically. Okay, that would be great. So June thirtieth.
So I'll hold off on sending Maggie emails and stuff. And then on the fund reserve policy, so I kind of went again, I I went back and looked at my notes. I'm not sure that I took the best notes. Um so on the fund reserve policy, the um. Comment that I took a look at and then there was a couple of others. Um the one that stood out was um. A question about this sewer um reserve and whether three hundred thousand was. Um enough of the sewer reserve and a uh potential request to raise that to five hundred thousand. Um so I took that as a no. Uh but kind of the same question here for council is. Is there any other information you need from me to move this policy forward? And uh process for getting comments to me and then having a neighbor have a council or file a group?
The room's not like anyone needs anything. Maybe you just have to end it enough.
I was gonna say, yeah, just, okay, to double check her. Yeah. So same thing, uh June thirtieth, anticipated comment date, and I will mark it up on the five hundred thousand. I'll make that edit. Um but any others, June thirtieth, the goal agreed to um, you know, bring these policies back in July. Then it would be in July. It's for canceling that, right? Okay.
That sounds good.
That is. What I needed, but anything else on the financial policies that you need from me or? Uh go ahead, counsel.
I can't wait. Thank you.
Love it for you. That's it. All right, so we um have some time left, so instead we did take a big break or um. I was thinking you have other council reports um from the council meeting, so I think we had a pretty good, good order discussion here and it's. Because I know we have a light agenda. Sometimes I might say, let's save those for the council reports in the council meeting. It's nice to have both options, so. I don't know if anyone had anything else and they were just holding back a bit because of, you know, cows are always tied on time sometimes. Um did anyone else have any other? Um I'll just bring up our council chat that we had. Um it was. Myself, council member Natalie and council member Shaker. Um and then our lieutenant and sergeant were there as well, which was awesome. We did have. So we had one person come, but then the business owners, like at least a couple, there were more people that came out and started talking to us. Um. I think one of the big things that came up with uh the resident that arrived. And he sort of works in the industry as well, is the Safeway parking lot and the exits and entrances there and the traffic. Um so my memory, so you guys can chime in when I can't remember something that was brought up. He was concerned about people turning left on onto two oh three out of that, you know, Safeway parking lot and was like. Can you put, you know, I don't know, like there's signs that they have their parking lot that's private property, but you know, what it, what would it take to get like a concrete median, you know? Their concerns about, you know, in general, traffic and how it flows in and out of there um. Is doable now, but with more building, more people living here, it might continue to get more because the queue for. So if you're coming down Big Rock and the queue to turn left onto two oh three, um is pretty, I know we always move that little concrete broken piece back in place. It's, it gets it a lot, right? But I'm just wondering, like, what kinds of options would people look at to make that more efficient? Like, should you not allow? I don't know what's allowed or not, but you know, people turning left out of that one right by the gas station while people are turning right out of Starbucks. Like. What's gonna, I mean, do we have any plans to look at that whole system at some point? That's sort of what was brought up from this one resident who's. Just concerned seeing it, you know, because he drives that way every day. So that's what he had brought up. And I don't expect the answers or anything. I just wanted to vocalize that to the group that that was brought up. Um. And then the other thing was um in general, crosswalk safety. I'll keep that, you know, vague and I love, I think we all know, like, you know, Main Street and. One of the business owners right there is right next to the D Hall sees a lot of traffic and just. Crosswalks and all that. So I think we had kind of had a discussion about how it used to be that certain things weren't allowed on two oh three. Not highway, like a rapid flashing weekends, but they seem to change their tone a little bit over the years and now we have some, which is great. So in general. Is there anything else we could do to improve um visibility for pedestrians, I think?
That's what I'm thinking. Has been, you know, maybe I have.
Was that?
Does incarnation have those on Main Street? Yeah, they do. They put in on two oh three, so what we.
Probably use the ones that we have put in too, maybe to help you like, hey, well, they did it. That's, I feel like that's what the cities do sometimes, like, well, they did it, so we're gonna do it too, but.
Especially.
Yeah, what was that?
Especially when I have the same in here.
Yeah. So anyways, um do you guys remember anything else that came up in that conversation? I know we talked about mufflers too, but go ahead, Jennifer.
Um we also had a good conversation about economic development and kind of wishing there was more um. More retail that there is, you know, we're bringing in people to go to restaurants, but you know, the. It doesn't necessarily always translate into people going into the retail shops and that really why helps retail is more detail. It's like you don't worry about the competition. Creates continuity of someone is like, oh, I'm gonna go to the new hall and shop the cute little shops, you know, but if there's really not very many. Um anyway, I thought that was an interesting perspective and just um.
Yeah, someone who's been in business for a long time, that business owner, you know, she, first thing she said was competition's never a bad thing. It's good. It's good. It, you know, helps boost the economy. So. Bring some more people around and stay, people stay longer, they're more likely to grab lunch here and so they're jetting down here to one shop and then leaving. So it just did really, yeah.
I mean, and the really exciting thing that, I don't know, maybe you aren't willing to talk about it. Is the library being open yet more? I mean, that brought me down in my youth. That was the prime thing that would bring me down into town and we would shop. We would go get a cookie or a pastry. So just having more things that make everyone, you know. Yeah, everything better.
Yeah, it was funny. After that conversation, I was driving home. And reflecting on the things like the bring me to a small town like a toy store, something like that would be good.
So we have that once about, I don't know, eighteen years ago. Remember that? Um, was it that long ago?
Yeah, it's like going to the small number. Amazon shop shipping.
And the bookstore. Yeah, and that's right. I didn't mention this, but Cynthia, you know, and Rita stopped by as well. Oh, and you stopped, you walked by. But we kind of, we took all their chairs. There were a lot of people. I'm kind of a CC, so um speaking of that, though, I have not scheduled anymore because it's. Um, speaking of that though, I have not scheduled any more because it's summer, so my schedule's a little hectic. I don't know if anyone here really wants to do that. Or I've talked about this before, but we've never pulled it off because my schedule's always so hectic. But I would love to set up down by some of the concerts because I'm gonna be down there. Anyways, probably. So I don't know. Is that something we want to organize? If you just think about it, I mean, if we had some kind of little yard signs that are so light and easy to carry around, just say council chat or stop by. Just make ourselves visible because I know a lot of people might know us, our own circles, but that might encourage people to actually stop by and start a conversation, so.
Yeah, good. One thing I wanted to throw out, and I spoke about it before, is that the farmers market, they actually have an extra booth that nonprofits can use or somebody can use, or we can bring one of those tents and pop it up. Just, it might be a great place for our, some of our new staff to meet the community. And it can also be like a little council chat for whoever wants to show up. I don't know. I just wanted to throw that out there because you definitely get community members and knowing around. And so, anyway.
So I threw our new emergency management coordinator around. We went down to the site for the Taylor Landing as well as for farmers market. He made the exact mention. It's a great place to, you know, inform the community, of course, to drive, you know, emergency management, preparedness, preparation. You know, what does that mean and how do you achieve it? So, yeah, it's, it's been discussed. In action. We have some staff now, so I'm sure they're here week one or day two for our guy. I don't know, there's two weeks now, almost, but yeah, those are good ideas.
Would you want to, not to put you on the spot, but you brought it up. Would you want to organize a council chat at that, at one of the upcoming farmers markets or you could pick one per month through the summer? You know, and any council member's welcome to just, you know, think of one. I've been doing it for years, just kind of thinking dates and times. So if you want to branch out, just let everybody know so that we're not overlapping or anything and then, yeah.
Yeah, maybe you don't know. I'll talk to you too, you know, there'll be a coordination that, you know, certain good data for that as well.
Yeah. So still a little bit of time. Did anyone else, oh, maybe go back and maybe just stay in that. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to check. Did anyone have any other like council type reports or?
I can answer a couple of questions.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Access. And I can't get on the network right now to get a decent cost back here, so I'm gonna have to guess on a couple. So a couple of points I heard, one is access, then two is, you know, vision safety in downtown. As far as access, I'd have to go back and look at the plan that was approved through Washington for Safeway's benefit. But I would imagine it's limited access control right in, right out, southbound in for spacing from the intersection reasons. Now that said, I have to double check too, is that highway with a different speed when that went in? I think it's higher, right? So a lot of those, both of those set points are based on speed. So it may be in allowed movement now, but I still think there's a double yellow.
There's something you're saying, it's still.
It's still enforceable, traffic enforcement. If they wanted to enforce it, they could, but I think it's still crossing a double yellow.
Well, I think the point was if people are doing it and shouldn't be doing it, so that, is there something we can do to enforce it physically?
Yeah, direct police to get tickets.
Or, I don't know, like a little media.
Or, yeah, so the cost.
I think that's what he was getting at.
Yeah, and I didn't have that program. I mean, if the council wants to give direction to do that, I mean, we have an action, I know next, but or the C curve you're talking about on Big Rock, that's getting replaced with the overlay. It's $57, but I don't know that it would be that expensive to put something over there. It's not filled in and you call them pork chops. So if you go to QFC on the ridge, you notice when you come out of the Western Milk entrance on the Dolity, you can't go left either. But plenty of people avoid the pork chop and do it, but at least it's steering you, even though it has a sign, the same sign we have. It has a little bit of a dominator in raised concrete. I mean, it's not my money. I'm okay. And we would, we could do a change order with the overlay folks and see if they'd do it. It's not my.
Are you?
Not.
Go ahead. Oh, did you have, I was just gonna ask, are you planning, so you're planning a replacement of that? It's called a pork chop. I pulled anything up, but are you gonna make it bigger? Because it seems like only like for cars, maybe in that part of the area.
So we're replacing the C curve with the overlay program at the turn pocket there. And it has, yeah, I think you're talking about the toward pocket for, it's called westbound Big Rock Road.
Yeah.
Right? Onto southbound 203.
Yeah.
The configuration is so tight there because of very spacing, but that can't be changed. Because you have to provide a little pocket for refugees to get into, or we could lose and limit the whole access into the Starbucks facility from eastbound Big Rock.
Oh, right.
There's.
But I mean, yeah, that's so tough. Because I think like from 203, I don't know.
And you have to go down.
Like, why would you?
It has to go in, right out.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking about why would you turn right on the Big Rock to turn left when you can just go straight and go in there? Or, you know what I mean? Or like limit people, not allow people to turn, because there's two driveways on that north side of Safeway. So like not a lot of left turns out of the one closest to the intersection. But I don't know, like, I don't know how that stuff works and what's allowed to do or not, so I'm just throwing this stuff out, but I was just curious if that. And sorry, go ahead, Jennifer.
Yeah, I mean, you bring up exactly. It's that turn pocket, the staging area for that turn is insufficient. I mean, there's just no way you can look at that and think that with the amount of growth we're putting in. It is completely insufficient. And so, and it's only going to get worse. And we have, I, I, I mean, there's a lot of people moving in that will be putting pressure, no pressure on coming down and heading out. Anyway, I, I don't see it on the tip of the project, that intersection, I don't think is identified.
Yeah, so the transportation benefit district is very loose on what we can and cannot add or change in the transportation system. It's pretty much a cartworn if you want to use T, T media funds or adding that small bit of work you could.
I guess it's not that. It's that we aren't collecting traffic impact fee to deal with a lot of the traffic impacts of growth, is my concern.
On Big Rock specifically?
On a lot of the roads potentially. I mean, we have dealing with Windville, Duval and Main Street at only costing a million dollars. That's not a million dollar project. That's a million dollars to just think about the project.
Right.
And so we are under collecting, in my opinion.
Yeah.
To deal with the, the issues that we are bringing on by bringing on all of this growth. And we have one shot to collect. Once the homes are here, it's a deficiency, an existing deficiency.
But existing efficiencies aren't allowed to be collected upon for new growth.
Exactly.
In fact.
Well, I mean, the turn pocket is annoying now. It's really going to be completely a problem the more, you see what I mean? Like now we can tolerate it. I think it will become intolerable.
But I think, I mean, we could have some. I mean, we could have some good options, you know, uh, what is available.
So omitting the movement in isn't an issue, but you certainly wouldn't do it without talking to those business owners. And I can tell you, every drive access potential in is a significant potential portion of their revenue. Yeah, so if you can't get in two ways and you get in one way, then like
Yeah.
the statistics are access will decrease to the side the more you limit.
Right.
Which I find, I, I, like I said, operationally, we review, you know, accidents and the accident history. I haven't seen a bump in accidents in that intersection, obviously close calls and whatnot, but we can have a, a meeting with the property owners and advise what's happening. I mean, I would really want to do a little study with, you know, get transport here to, to count cars, look at the intersection, look at the operations actively during, you know, peak periods, which our, our peak period's a peak, but we can always make it a, because I'm sure it's gonna vary on time of day. What movements come in and out of there.
With anything traffic related, like I, I'm just, I think all of us are just bringing up observations, but I don't know. I, I would want some, whatever you think, like some kind of study year. I mean, I don't want to just say, I think we should do this, you know, that's not viable. And then of course have conversations with the business owners as well, because I'd be curious, you know, using that parking lot, all of us do, right? So, you know, would it be easier for people, would it clear out the Starbucks line more easily if people don't get stuck trying to? I don't know, like, so it might not, it's, I, we have things before where I think it's gonna be one thing and then they're like, oh, no, it's this other thing. So, um, yeah, that all sounds good. I don't know at what point, you know, timeline wise, I'm not saying let's drop everything and do that. I'm just bringing it up and something to think about for the future, wherever it sits in. Very good.
Well, I was gonna say something similar. Before we spend staff time on us, or we'll spend a whole lot of time on, I want a good reason why. And I, I use that intersection daily, same as many of you. You know, occasionally I get stuck behind a little bit of traffic and, you know, very seldom actually set through, you know, have an extra light to go through. But, you know, those are inconveniences to me, not, you know, not really safety, you know, safety hazards. As far as, you know, turning on 2, people turning left on 203 out of the safety parking lot, I'd want to see some data on that as well. We had accidents there? Maybe we have. I, I don't know. But I don't want to bust an act. I don't want to spend staff time on, you know, things that really don't deserve a priority with us. I mean, there's other ways we can spend staff time. I'm still, you know, I'm, I'm, I still think the Cherry Valley turnoff on 203 is one of our major safety issues in the, in the city, along with our pedestrian crosswalks and things like that. I think those things ought to be our, our real priorities here. Other things based on safety and the level of inconvenience do need to be considered. But when somebody on, you know, on rare occasion has to sit through a traffic light and wait for another one, that level of inconvenience doesn't warrant, you know, much of a, you know, effort on our, as far as on this.
Frank, and I, I, I mean, in, in general, I agree with you. I think the only thing that I struggle with sometimes, and we see it throughout the city. We've talked about it on Big Rock and, you know, for Big Rock in terms of the scheme and the changes. It's, we should have alignment between what things are posted and how the regulations are being enforced. And that's where I struggle sometimes. If, if in fact it's okay, because that actually intersection on 203, the left turn, it has good sight lines. It's a long, straight sight line. It's really, you know, people are going too fast, but I agree with you, you know, it's likely gonna be fine. But if that's the case, we should evaluate whether we should allow left-hand turn. Because if we're not enforcing, people are making their anyway, then we're just sort of encouraging people to circumvent the rules. Similarly, you know, that stretch of Big Rock, we lowered the speed limit. I know on a daily basis, one, I do it and I see people doing it and they're not driving that speed limit. They're driving 35 instead of the 25 posted. And, you know, if that's the right thing, we should either be enforcing it or we should be looking at adjusting it. So that's my, the little bit of feedback. I don't have a, I agree with you, Rick, in terms of emphasis should be on safety and investments. And there we, we get the most ROI, particularly with one that's staffed on, but the other part is for those, particularly whether it's an intersection, a turn, a sign posting, where we have a misalignment between what we're promoting and what we're implementing. I think we should just, you know, carve out some time to reevaluate those. And I will be transparent. I think those are lower priorities than other things, but I do think there should be time to do that. Because we get feedback in that respect too, and the council chat, like why are people doing that? Whereas if it wasn't posted as a no left turn, I don't think you would necessarily have gotten some feedback.
That's a ton of stuff. And was there anything else Steve that you wanted, wanted that you had heard?
Yeah, no. Topics. So LLS has said it, Level Service of that intersection said that D, it is operating better than that under current review. That's one on crosswalks. Down here, I am opposed, obviously nothing budgeted, but the three we put in, I think the contract was like 166 for the three we installed at Valley. 145 and 143. So you, you know, we would never get it approved for one in every intersection down here. But I think we would probably be lucky to get it approved between Stevens and Virginia, probably in Cherry, since it's split the middle. So. And I, I'm not opposed either to thermal plastic striping linearly with the crosswalks, the concrete dolls, and it's not as bright as it used to be. I know in the dusk times in winter, it's pretty dark. Granted, the LED lights are better than the old sodium alloys because those are kind of orangey, but stripe those, either ask for forgiveness or permission in the pork chop. I'm not sure they care much anymore, so. There's always options. We have a thermal group coming in next two months.
Oh, that's good. All right. Well, thanks for the discussion, everyone. Do you want to take, get started on here and we'll get however far we can?
I, it's gonna be pretty soon today. I think they get it.
Yeah, go for it.
And I will take a look at the accident reports. I'm receiving a quarter since, about a time or a quarter overdue, I'm getting that.
Okay, next slide please. And the next one. So just a notice or note that the upcoming meeting next Tuesday is a traveling meeting to the police department. So we're gonna do a tour of the police department. She could be ready. We'll meet in a conference room for anyone who's there and he'll be prepared with a police update with stats and other stuff. So we will have that meeting there and looking forward to it.
Sure. What time is that meeting?
5:30.
It's 5:30. Okay, because it shows that it's council on June 13th. On your own.
Yeah, I subscribe to that calendar and it shows this.
You might look through your, maybe you have another invitation for another one, because that's, I did have to cancel invitations some, over a month ago just to update the Zoom meeting information, but new invitations were sent out.
Some don't, usually you can have, they show up on the calendar, but they're not locked in blue. I don't know. We can figure it out afterward and you can look at how it looks on one of our laptops that you have. I'm sure we can figure that out.
Yeah, seniors' ones are nice, so.
Yeah.
What time is that?
It's seven.
Okay.
So I mean, if it was really at 5:30.
Yeah.
Then I think, yeah.
It's at 5:30, so, and I don't imagine if you went until seven, then what I mean, I'm hanging out afterward and talk, but Jennifer did ask and I think he's planning for an hour at most.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds good. And next slide. And so community development. I will share, before I turn it over to Director Thomas, that it is just insanely busy and that will continue to be the message from here through probably September, October. So Director Thomas.
Thank you, good evening, council and mayor, as she was online, and also to our attorney, nobody else is not having her, I believe. It definitely had been a busy year. We issued 59 permits last month, 26 of them were for sort of the founding residential homes. The building department alone had about 259 inspections and planning had about 40, which is quite a bit for us. Our volumes are probably close to 50% over there where they would normally be. So it did. Our 2024 conference of plan update, our R and P is due this Friday, so we're super excited. It closes at one. And so we're hoping to start to work towards a contract. And then our perpetual open space plan, we will issue that next Monday. So we're just trying to kind of push them like three weeks out so that we're not trying to do too much at one time. We've closed a handful of code enforcement cases. As you know, code enforcement is, it can be challenging. It can take time. And we probably do 20 to 30 a year, so we closed that like five in one week. So that was what we call a big week for us. So we were really excited about that. We completed a first draft of our new street tree list, so that'll be coming to council along with some other policy updates, including a strike and delete version of the tree protection policy that we worked with our consultant on, our PR person, Anna. And we did that with a grant. We actually had to report out last week. We had to have everything completed in its first draft. So we're gonna come to planning commissioning council in July. We had a really great workshop on housing policy. Um, we had a really great workshop on, um, housing policy. So thank you for those that came. Um, it was a lot of information. So I'm assuming you're still kind of going through that. Um, so please continue to do so and provide us some feedback. Uh, yay, we received our first mobile food truck, um, permit application late last week. So we're super excited about that. Well, actually, we actually already reviewed it and got comments back, um, to the applicant. Uh, we had a preparation this week for a project on one forty-fifth and Main Street. That's just a little snapshot, really. It's been busy.
I have a quick question. Um, could you remind us, is there a deadline on when you and I do like feedback on housing policy?
I would say by the end of the month. Yeah. And I honestly cannot remember if we posted the, um, the webinar. If we haven't, I'll check in tomorrow right away with this on, make sure that we get. We don't necessarily post them until after planning commissioners approve the minutes. But I think so, anybody that wasn't there can go online and do the presentation.
Where do you, where's the location for the food truck? Do you have that?
Yeah, it is, um, just down the street on, right on Main Street where the Dugall market is. And that first one.
You know, I can't.
It will be a lot next.
Uh, Councilor Nata, did you have a question?
When you were saying the location, I noticed that the art mural has been sand blasted or blasted off of there. Is that being replaced or?
Uh, that's a great question. I'm not sure who sand blasted it.
It's a great question.
Oh.
It was cleaned off. Yeah. It was falling apart. So we pressure washed it and moved off. It didn't do much. So my hope is when we have Rita up and running, we can expect to get some of those kind of small art style projects. If been on arts commission or a cultural commission, which was the guiding light, so to speak, for those activities, including the wood banners, which we still have clean blanks out that we need to get reissued, but uh, I put up paint out the colors. So that's very artistic in about my wheelhouse. So, I don't know.
Uh, so Rita met with the, uh, Dugall Foundation for the Arts last week. At an introductory meeting, um, with their, um, head of business, president or chairperson, um, to start kind of develop, not only just developing the relationship, but finding out um, how the city can support their efforts. I think that's probably going to be the foundation for the, um, cultural commission. And getting that back up and going for that is, um, on Rita's. That was the thought would be after summer stage, that that would be kind of the next big project.
Thank you.
Right next slide. And I will have Director Lannish at the meeting. Present on the public address site.
Uh, let's see. Oh, yeah. Okay. So Stephen Lannish at Public Works, um, very busy everywhere. So not an excuse, but just moving, um, City Hall Carpet is bid and selected and getting ready on the start date. The key card Bluetooth access, little project in the city hall is also ready to roll. So they're just giving them a notice to proceed. Um, onboarding the new emergency management coordinator, Luke Ecker, he will come to the, he'll probably come to the police station next week. Um, to get a tour and visit with his, uh, his wife and whatnot. He should be here for the six twenty meeting. Um, very ongoing, jumping in, uh, lots to do and he's sharing my, gives you know him really well. Um, we're quoting out resurfacing projects that are budgeted, so Foxhole and Cherry Valley, um, ten scores. For those who don't know, Cherry Valley ten scores are our obligation through a HUD grant from the eighties. So we have cracked seal before and resurfaced before and it's just time. So we do have money question. Um, I'm not sure if you all have been receiving requests, but I had a quite a influx of pitch wallers. I said, please talk to Mayor Council. I can build anything and it'd be fun to do it. Um, but we do have the various project monies again for each hundred and ten grand. So there's nothing programmed for them now. Um, I am going to get a quote on that service, see what it looks like and if it's reasonable, I can bring it back. And just add it because if we bring it out of all the gear already running around town spraying courts, then to have them come back and spray words. So I will keep you updated on that. Pillow landing power is finally on. Can't even imagine. But yeah, it's done. I, I don't have a final number, but it was well under the budget number. In my thirties and I think you had forty-something ridiculous number budgeted. Uh, I and I for sewer, we issued an RFQ to get that program up and running and parametric responded. So Ben's working on pretty together, uh, a contract for without work that's important and budgeted and, uh, moving forward, which we're excited for. Uh, so yes, scheme, uh, is his name. He is a senior at Cedar Crest. We came to us, the clip on the bottom left is, is, um, you know, cat rendition of the facility. Um, he has done explorer for our work adjacent to the footings that exist. So, you know, we don't have any ad built for that. So, uh, in the design and his dad's a civil engineer licensed in state of Ohio, which is very helpful. Um, I had him dig down, he had a hand dig adjacent to a couple of foundation blocks to one, make sure there were blocks. And then two, under body size, so we can then do the, the analysis on structure itself. So it's getting a new roof, the roof structure, uh, there's one damaged spot from a limb fall. But the roof structure itself is intact and great shape. He's going to re-roof that and then apply new vertical columns to the, um, roof. The new anchorages per today's standard, you have the building permitting of the building process. Uh, all again part of this project, which is great learning for him. And like I said, uh, building inspection and review, um, examination. Like this is amazing. Nine out of ten here, the kid got a A only because I can't give him a hundred percent. And this is, but you did a great job. And, and this is tailor part, not table to the other part. Right. It's a little picnic shelter. I love the basket. Um, so yeah, that's super exciting to get that done. And it is in very bad shape to the point of the crew. We've had on our top list on what do we do next? Sites they dig out. So he's very timely. And he's got a rock and roll. I haven't seen his Facebook profile and his, uh, built on me. Um, I cautioned him to be careful. He ends up with more money than he asked for. He's got to figure out to do this. So, uh, that's if you said one turn. But he hasn't asked for funding. I've been very clear, like, we, we can help, but I want a plan from you on how that. And I'm the only step member who's been involved. And other than his permit, which he paid for that review process for. Um, so yeah. And then the next slide is just, uh, we do have a drone. It was just over a thousand dollars. So we're, we've already not just built to use for this, but, uh, you know, we get a lot of tree requests. And the new drone relative to survey implementation is incredible. So we literally can fly like a survey line out of a lot. And somebody says, well, the tree leaves come down. It's in my back. It's in the city's property, not my backyard. I mean, we can say. Maybe, but so it's a tool for many things, inspection, water tanks, uh, where to run across many things, uh, and it's.
Communications.
Uh, adjacent, yeah.
There is anxiety to get them.
Yeah.
Uh, Ron.
Yeah, it was just more of a, um, logistical question, Madren. Do you, do you have a sort of a specific operator in the rules have gotten more constrained in terms of where you can fly and if you can, if you preprogrammed routes and then it's sort of, you know, match the routes you do, or you got to have somebody with some, some bad skill. I've crashed my drone multiple times. Trying to survey the roof and other things. So.
Yeah. There's a lot. The, what is this, section one oh seven, commercial license? You do not technically need one. We read through the rules. But we're going over the manuals for that. So there's only like two people who are flying right now. Um, but yeah.
And I would add that, uh, it is on my, it's on a sticky note on my desk to, uh, put together general policy.
Policy.
Yeah.
Oh.
You've got to make a police department show. Yeah, I've already heard that. Yeah, they, they sent the thing that would be very helpful. And I was listening to the radio right before the meeting, like, oh, there's an accident at the roundabout. Or no, it was someone stuck on two or three, actually intersection.
Yeah.
Virginia.
Yeah.
My God, put the drone up and see what it is.
It'll happen again. Yeah, just, you know, even early vacation.
Right.
So I was going to ask a quick question on the Dugall Scout project. Um, are, who's taking it down? Is that, is he doing all of that, like the whole thing? Wow.
Yeah, then they'll, it, it's set up so they can put temporary supports in and go post by post.
Yeah.
He's doing a, a hand log skin, it's cedar post that he's actually hand cleaning.
Wow.
And shaving.
That's amazing.
Though, yeah, we'll put lacquer and all that on it. But yeah.
Do we charge for renting that? Or, cause I know I've been at many birthday parties.
Of that one?
Yeah.
No, not, not that one. Uh, we don't have reservations for anything. It's all first come, first served, including the one on the main.
Yeah, we, it's a great spot. That's a beautiful park.
Nice change.
Great. And then one last, uh, uh, last slide. Um, so, uh, second thing first, uh, thank you for, um, to Councilmember Mavlin, Councilmember Mercer, and Mayor Pertim McHenry for participating in the finance director interviews. I really appreciated your feedback. They were yesterday, um, the final interviews. So, uh, when I know more, I will share more. Uh, Mayor Pertim and I and Mayor Overlander participated in mediation. That update will be, um, attached to this presentation when I upload it to the website. There's a written report that I wrote this morning. So you'll see that when this all gets updated. And then one final thing, um, Councilmember Shaker and I communicated on use of the visitor center. So we have stopped reservations for downstairs because downstairs is now city hall MX. Um, but it does remain, um, the question remains about this space. So generally what we're doing right now is renting out the front space up here. Um, that conference room and anything kind of council chambers forward. Um, so we have a couple groups right now that use that space in there. Um, so, um, uh, Clerk Potera, we have, I think it's Friday, Sunday, maybe it's Thursday, Friday, Sunday.
That's also about right.
Yeah, that uses that every week. Um, the question is this space. And so for the most part, I have discouraged renting this space because we want to maintain this as a council chamber. Um, the technology, we want to make sure, um, that owl and the clerk technology is kind of for our use because we're still perfecting it. So I discourage using the technology. Um, there is a possibility that we can rent this whole floor. But we're not budgeted to replace this furniture. We're not budgeted to replace the technology. So if we do rent out this whole space, the question is, did we charge a nominal fee in addition to the rental fee for moving the furniture out of the way, putting the technology in and putting this all back up? Should we allow groups to use the furniture, the council chamber furniture? Should we allow them to use the technology? So I kind of open it all up to you. Um, at this point, again, we lightly discourage use of the council chamber.
So actually I've been asked a slightly different question to the one you're having, because I think that was one of the things I haven't been clear on as we repurposed on the space, you know, in terms of, there's obviously nothing to sort of prevent that. One of the questions I had is when we actually did look at moving from the fire station here, if there was any thought given to, to putting up a wall. You know, I think obvious place between that and sort of segregating the council chambers from the rental space out there, which would address any of the concerns about the space. I think it's a slightly different question than if we want to open up use because then there needs to be some contingencies or, or, uh, policy put in place, as you said, for damage, much like we did for the concessions. But I was just curious that, that first question, if that was part of the discussion, that enough, that was a question for you, Steve.
Yeah, I'm not laughing at you, Councilmember Mercer. Uh, so the assessment of this structure is such that it's very limited on its occupancy type and its orientation. So no walls or anything can happen about significant work and we're kind of pressing our left foot forty-nine, uh, on the, on walls.
Yeah, no worries. And I don't think, you know, like a massive sort of structure.
Do you have any style?
Yeah, forty and type divider, they have special walls. Yeah, that, that would also trigger it. Not like a.
Probably not, I think, reading style setup, but it's hard to see that with your, 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 your panel here and it's.
I guess. Yeah. Anyway, not to have been a separate conversation, but.
Yeah.
So i- in the case of, uh, because of the members they have, this is really the only space that works. I did ask him, I, I think we already did talk to him about the depot, the depot's a no-go primarily because of the wall down.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
Chamber.
You're not.
Uh, and of course, this is where this, this space is really what they, what they want here. So I would, if, if we would consider rent, maybe this particular space, the back, back area of the visitor center. Uh, we certainly have concerns about the technology. I think that we could do a hands-on in the technology. They can bring in their own technology, uh, if they, they need to, uh, furniture, however. There, you know, I'm, I'm not sure we can do a hands-on on, on, on the furniture, especially for an organization of size, which changes. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I go to the meetings, they might have thirty or forty members on a busy, busy night. And the, uh, you know, leave this intact. You know, we already have some tables, you know, tables and chairs back there. I don't know if we can stack and get it forty-two or, or not that way without moving this, uh, there. And then, you know, I'm, we do that. I don't want to encourage some staff on it. Was that the cleaning time or whatever? Fine. I mean, change of page that, but then you go, uh, I don't want to encourage any of that. Stuff around or, you know, anything like that. So, and, and Cynthia, I know you've given some more thoughts than probably anyone. So while you take it from it.
Um, any other, uh, question? I'd love to get this, this side in use again, if it's possible. I mean, if it's not feasible, it's not. But if there is a way, um, I mean, we, we have a damage deposit if something gets damaged. If you like, it would be protected. So I don't know.
I, I, really quick, and then I'll hand it back to you. I, I think for me, the main thing is to make sure we're able, um, you know, setting stuff up for meetings takes time. So lately we've been able to just keep it set up. So if we start doing that and things need to get moved around, or whether there's a cost to that now, and make sure that, you know, we're covered. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that is actually where I was going a little bit as well as both the, because even, you know, there's, I mean, a lot of that didn't work, but it needs to, you know, add new cables and redo cables. I wasn't sure in terms of when we were discussing the upgrades and technology upgrades, why I figured the thought of a lockable cabinet in or something that could be built into the front phase or where it would be easy, you know, you just have the one module coming out to simplify that. But I think that's my bigger concern is just, you know, as you said, segregating the furniture, which I think there's a process for if there's damage to sort of keeping some of that. I think it's, it's a little more impactful, both the setup time and then the potential damage to equipment. Because as simple as it is, it can still be misconnected and other things.
Okay. Well, go Councilmember Lovett.
Yeah, I'd just say that, um, hi, everybody. I would just say that, uh, it's a good idea to keep places like that open in my estimation because, um, it brings people that we may not normally see downtown to that space. And, uh, from an economic perspective, I think it just makes the town a little bit more open to everybody. So I think it's a good idea to keep it open.
And then Councilmember Stubble, did you have a name?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's a way to put some signs up or something, city council chambers.
Does not work unfortunately. You know, we have tried that. Um, I will say for the most part, our renders are respectful. Um, we have had trouble with this space coming back to trash and dirt. And, um, the clerk comes in and does quite a bit of cleaning when we have big groups here. Um, I think if we. Um, I think if we, you know, again, make it more clear that it's kind of, uh, a special thing to use this space and to use council, um, furniture and, and, you know, that we hope and expect that the furniture is, um, used respectfully. Um, we have, um, our favorite, our fee schedule has crew time element to it where we can post crew time to a rental if, um, the use of the space requires a lot of staff time. Um, we did, I did present that option to the council, they, or to the chamber. Um, they weren't initially very happy with that option, but we can revisit that issue.
Ooh, that's true.
Um, to use, um, to charge a certain amount of crew time in cleanup for use of this space. If they wanted to just use it as a rental space, the, yeah, I'll say something really quick and I'll go Jennifer in the end of the day. I, I just wanted to say too that I, I, I would really strongly be in favor of having a system or a set of procedures or set of policy or something that if we are coming back and it has not been properly cleaned up or making that there's some kind of warning, and I mean, it's a privilege to rent it. If you're not cleaning up after yourself properly, you're not going to use this space anymore, period. Um, Jennifer.
Yeah, I'd like to give people the opportunity to have a clear cleaning checklist. Uh, I mean, I've rented places and often there's a very clear list, like this is what's expected. If you come in and it's not there, then they get charged with the, I would rather do that than just start charging the fee, whether someone's willing to clean it or not. Um, but have an option, you do it, they won't charge you.
Thank you. Um, I was just going to mention, um, that, uh, there is a local business who is a chamber member who just recently opened an event space that really impressed us straight from city limits. So this is not even close to the, you know, this is not the only place that is available for that. Um, even though there are places within, you know, stone's throw distance of our existing facility. Uh, and, you know, it is really important that we make sure that our equipment isn't damaged and what have you. Um, so I'm really sensitive to this, yet at the same time, uh, we're going to be in this issue, uh, be having this issue until we build a new facility. Um, so it's probably better to, um, figure out the rules and hold to them and find help with my other places to meet, um, because especially with staff downstairs, we need to make sure staff has a safe workspace as well. And this building does not really facilitate uh, a true sense of separation, um, in the way that other facilities do.
All right. Well, I think I have good direction and we can, um, play around in the middle and see how it goes. But, um, I think the minus step will be to blend up a little and then we'll go from there.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the committee of the whole meeting at seven oh six. So I don't know if you're fine taking like a two minute break really quick.
Well, give everybody the five minute.
Okay.
Most correct, seven hour. Just stop it, it'll be seven eleven.
I'm Smith, I've been at Duval about a year and a half and joined the library board pretty much right away. I also have the little one there at Sherry Valley and right now I'm going to learn more about the library and getting up in. I'm Julia, I'm here with the library board for about six years now and looking forward for seven years. And I work at Harvard. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. And so I'm here because I have lots of good news about the library that I would like to share with you. Next slide. We have officially eliminated late fines as of May, just about a month. The board of trustees is going to approve eliminating late fines and we joined a lot of our peer libraries that have done the same. So we're really pleased about that. And we've also made a change for overdue items because once an item goes lost, they do have to pay for the item. And prior it used to be thirty days, so we've extended it to sixty. So that gives people a little bit more time to look for it before they get a charge on their account. So that's another really big change that we're pleased to bring into the community. Next slide. General, as of June eighteenth, the Duval library will open seven days a week, twenty more hours per week. So this is sort of the big news for us and we're so pleased that we're able to do this. Pre-COVID, we were open six days a week, Monday to Saturday. But now we're going to be open for seven days a week. And one of the things that we're trying to do with King County is to try to make some of the hours more consistent of what you can expect at the library. So you can see Saturday and Sunday, but we'll be open from eleven AM to six PM. So it's the same time on both those weekend days. And then Monday through Friday, we've added an additional hour of service. And we tack it on so that we're at least open until six PM on Monday, Thursday, and Friday that you can see down. So we're really pleased about that. We've been busy trying to hire staff and fill positions. We've still got a few vacancies that we've got to fill, but we're going to be ready to roll on June eighteenth to see you back away. Next slide. Very. So I would like to introduce our new librarians for the Dally. On the left is Marie, in the middle is Hoon, and on the right is Becca. Both Becca and Marie are children team librarians. They are full-time staff. Hoon is also a full-time librarian, she's for adult services. And as you can see, we were making buttons at Duval Days this past weekend. So I brought a picture of some of those, those were gone like cupcakes on our table and booth. And what I really want to emphasize here for the first time in many, many, many years, we have essentially doubled our librarian time. So we're three full-time librarians sort of covering the whole gamut of children, teen, and adult services. Before we had sixty hours, we had a full-time children's person and a part-time team librarian. This is going to really help us provide more services, make more connections in the community. And I'm just really thrilled to have these folks on board. They have a lot of energy and they're already just hitting the ground running. So I'm really pleased with the work they've been doing. So welcome Marie and Hoon back to the Dally. And then, next slide. Of course, it's summer reading, we kick it off on June first. And this is for all ages, including adults. You can pick up your free log at the library or try reading the book stack. There's the URL there to get there, and this is through August forty-first. And once you've set your goal and meet your halfway goal, next slide please. You get your badge, so come into the library and pick up your badge. We have all kinds of aquatic animals and sea animals for the badges. And then the final prize, next slide please. So finish the prize is a journal to keep notes about your reading. Yeah. And then the last one, just thank you. Thanks. We don't have to watch it. You're welcome. If I just let it open, there's any questions, if you have questions for me?
Sure, just one quick question, just in terms of the hours changed. Obviously, it'd be great to have it in the summer or during the summer months. It's a great venue, folks are really nice, not having to be extended hours. The expectation that will carry throughout the year, seasonally and to winter as well, so that's sort of it. Obviously not to hold you by a permanent change in terms of promote the summer and then go to the fall.
The hours will be, they're not going to change seasonally. And right now we're, we have been held staff for the next three, two months. So this will be it.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Sometimes it's like you go to China and see how it works, but I know there's been a lot of hunger in the community in terms of, you know, coming out, everybody to go real in here. You know, just it's a great resource, but you know, safe space for many folks who are particularly on their loved ones who are getting warmer and.
Yeah.
It's meaningful. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. It's very glad to hear. I wanted to ask if, I don't know if you're here, I mentioned it before about economic development and bringing people here and for other retail, if there's people down here walking through, throwing things in. We might have a little, definitely the library with our log would come down here and then maybe go shop about, go get snacks. And I'm wondering, one of the things that interests were the events that you had, you know, story times or even, you know, the productions in the park where you had, you know, what, what the theater, story of the theater, if you do come out. Those were amazing. It's like, you know, a lot of great memories. And I wasn't sure if those kind of programming is, will start.
Yeah, and that's having more librarians to manage that is really a big plus. And so that's a word, we don't know what's going to unfold. Two of them, I mean, Maria is brand new, so she's really just dug in and started a lot of stuff. Hoon is from Seattle Public Library and so she's new to the system. So there's lots of, you know, that kind of stuff that they need to kind of learn. ECOS works and training that they're going to be attending, but they're, there's just the expectation that they're really in person.
I think the last time I thought, we've got any programs, they're virtual.
Oh, no, we have, we've been for some programming. Oh, yeah. You know, we have story times that we're already doing, that Marie's already doing. So we've definitely been doing that. We've now sort of, we're still holding on to some online programming that we have found out through the pandemic was popular online. And so we're trying to figure out how to continue to support that, but then also have the in library program as well as the ability to go out to venues and events, media events like Duval Days and that kind of thing. So, so yeah, so there's more to talk.
Okay.
I see where you're coming about. Yeah. Anything else? Any other questions?
Uh, if you may, I don't, I don't have a question, just want to say thank you for coming and I will really appreciate you, so just see you all here.
Thank you. And I have to add, thank you all for coming and thank you to our library board for serving. And to, as my, my, I remember the days of Tony Menchins along to every meeting, they're ten and a half. That's good, easy, I was a good worker. But thank you all sort of for bringing your childrens. I think it's important that the community knows that they are welcome at our meetings. And that we want them to be involved as early as possible. So thank you all for doing that. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have two very important proclamations this evening. The first one is a proclamation on Juneteenth, and I will go ahead and read that to the record. And also before I do that, I just want to make note that this is the first year that the city has Juneteenth as an official holiday. So the city will be closed on Monday, June nineteenth in observance of this really important milestone in our history. So whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African Americans in the United States, it is a time to honor their resilience, celebrate their contributions to society, and reflect upon the ongoing pursuit of freedom and equality. Whereas Juneteenth represents a pivotal moment in our nation's history, symbolizing the end of one of the darkest chapters of American history and the beginning of a long journey toward justice and equality. It is a reminder that progress toward a more inclusive society requires continuous efforts to dismantle systemic racism and grow social and economic equity. Whereas Juneteenth is a time to educate ourselves and future generations about this day's historical significance, honor the legacy of African Americans who have fought tirelessly for civil rights and recognize the cultural richness and diversity brought forth by African-American communities. Whereas Juneteenth allows all citizens to unite in unity and solidarity, fostering a sense of belonging, understanding, and respect across racial and ethnic lines. It is a moment to amplify the voices of marginalized communities and engage in conversations that promote empathy, equality, and justice. Whereas by acknowledging and commemorating Juneteenth, we reaffirm our commitment to eradicating racial inequality, discrimination, and oppression in all its forms. We strive to build a city that values and respects every individual's inherent dignity and worth, regardless of race or ethnicity. Therefore, let it be proclaimed that our city recognizes and celebrates Juneteenth as an official day of observance and remembrance. We encourage all residents to participate in Juneteenth activities, including educational programs, community gatherings, and cultural events that honor this day's historical significance and contemporary relevance. Furthermore, we urge businesses, schools, and community organizations to commemorate Juneteenth by organizing initiatives promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion, and fostering dialogue and understanding among individuals from diverse backgrounds. In witnessing this proclamation, we acknowledge the importance of Juneteenth and our collective history and pledge our commitment to creating a more just, inclusive, and equitable city for all. And the next proclamation we have is for Pride Month. Whereas Pride Month is a time to celebrate and honor the LGBTQ+ community, recognize their significant contributions to society, and advocate for equality and acceptance for all individuals, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Whereas Pride Month serves as a reminder of the ongoing struggles and discrimination faced by the LGBTQ+ community and the need for continued support, understanding, and compassion. Whereas we acknowledge and celebrate the diversity and uniqueness of everyone, understanding that love knows no boundaries, that every person deserves to be respected, valued, and embraced for who they are. Whereas we recognize the historical milestones achieved by the LGBTQ+ community in pursuit of, in the pursuit of equal rights and social justice and acknowledge the courageous individuals who have paved the way for a more inclusive and equitable society. Whereas we stand together in solidarity with our LGBTQ+ friends, family, colleagues, and community members, affirming our commitment to creating a world that celebrates and cherishes love, diversity, and inclusion. Thus, let it be proclaimed that during Pride Month, we express our unwavering support for the LGBTQ+ community, striving for a society free from prejudice, discrimination, and hate. Let us celebrate the beauty of love in all its forms, embracing the vibrant tapestry of identities and experiences that make our world more colorful, compassionate, and accepting. May Pride Month be a time of reflection, education, and unity as we work together towards a future where everyone can live authentically, without fear or judgment, where every voice is heard and valued. Now, therefore, I, E. O. R. Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-three as Pride Month and encourage all Duval's residents to celebrate and support our Duval LGBTQ+ community. And with that, just one more note is that anyone that has been paying attention to the national news, particularly over the last two years, very much so over the last six months to one year, are well aware of the degradation of rights and ability to exist safely and authentically for LGBTQ+ community across the country, not just in how people are treating them, but in laws that are being passed that are taking away the very foundation of our country, which is equal rights. And I encourage really everyone to do something extra this year and continue to pay attention and do what you can to support the community. This is near and dear to my heart for my family, friends, colleagues, as I know it is many people in this room. And we, they need our support more than they ever have at this point. When we talk about mental health as well, it's becoming a bigger and bigger issue than it ever has in other the community. And they need our support, they need our love, and they need to know that they're accepted and supported in our community. And I know that that's not an issue for people in this room, but I just wanted to make sure I shared that extra sentiment. So thank you. We'll go ahead and move on for, to comments from the audience. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please, of course, put your hand in the air. And others, you'll have three minutes of privacy. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone online? If you're online, please feel free to raise your hand and our clerk will hold you.
We don't have any.
All right, we don't have any. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on, but we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda. Some.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to scheduled items. First one is the mayor's report. First up, we did have the Northern Mayor's meeting today, and I was unable to attend due to a work commitment. But we did, Councilmember Mercer attended the South Cities Association Network meeting on our last two committee. And we had a great panel with our, several of our legislators, including our representative Larry Springer, a nice overview of the legislative session. It was relatively well-attended, lots of new faces. So it was great to get out and connect with those other city representatives. Tomorrow, San Juan Valley Mayor's Group is meeting in Councilmember Perry's office in Metro to do our quarterly meeting on transit, discuss what is going on there. And then I know Mayor Chum probably already mentioned it in committee of the whole, but AWC Annual Conference is coming up in two weeks. I will not be here as I do have more duties to attend to and will not be able to log on and attend remotely. But it's looking to be a great conference, so if you haven't signed up and think you can go, please sign up. It should be good weather, good people, and lots of great sessions. And with that, I'll conclude my report. And City of Benjager, do you have anything left on your report?
No, I don't think so. I think they concluded everything.
All right. And then for council committees, do we have any completely ad hoc committee reports? All right. Do we have any council reports that were not provided during committee of the whole? All right, seeing that, we'll move on. We do not have any unfinished business. Our first item of new business is a six-year transportation improvement program for discussion by Director Steve Linaszewski at Towne Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, Steve Linaszewski, Towne Works. Esteemed attorney and inspector. I'm John, I'll just share my screen. All right, so one slideshow set for both items, but also we pause in between. So the item for you for introduction is the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. The city's transportation improvement plan is a byproduct of the overall comprehensive plan and transportation elements of those master documents. They're an important part of how the city determines its transportation network's needs and then implements the better strategy to provide those improvements. Starts the high-level process, boils its way down to understanding the network definitions in the known detail and then implementation by selecting projects. This year, it is not a very comprehensive, matter of fact, a very minimal change. As you are aware, as Director Thomas said earlier, we're going through the selection solicitation for support to update our comprehensive plans. And then at that time, we'll also talk about the overall transportation system, its needs, and then reestablishing those types of projects, funds, the entire, you know, it's a redo at that time of the transportation element. So we don't have a lot to share. One proposed change, one of the projects on the list was completed by a developer through the development process. So First Avenue off of one forty-third place, highlighted on your right, the little bubble, half of that improvement that would connect over to one forty-fifth has been completed by the developer. There have been some small sidewalk improvements along some of the corridor. But other than that, that is the only major element that has been completed this last year. The TIP documentation in the packet itself also completes the obligations for our complete streets updating and networking. That's an important program through the Transportation Improvement Board. They do not and did not have any project over the last three years. The last time we were a participant of their active program, because they suspended, was the two seventy-fifth sidewalk project. There is a meeting this week. We're expecting them to possibly announce that they are going to bring it back this year. So that's exciting. Project and credit member wrestler, project manager wrestler will be attending that this week for us. Hopefully, we can do that. The lift again remains almost exactly the same minus a small reduction of the First Avenue corridor redevelopment. This will be impacting, I can share it. So there's projects listed in specificity and there's also programs on the latter part of the list. Non-motorized citywide programs are also on there under M and L and then ADA Transition Plan, ADA related improvements. And then we, boy, yeah, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we implemented a completed projects table that was associated with borrowing, so we can memorialize how and what we funded through borrowed dollars. The Main Street project on SR two or three did have a component of its funds that were borrowed, I believe they were levy dollars. Maybe you're the only one around from that timeframe, does it ever happen? That was.
I don't think Main Street was levy.
It just.
It was, we, we did the bond at the same time as the park, the park was the levy, yeah.
So yes, it's a place we just memorialize those activities. So it was submitted in writing at the last meeting, we're chatting about it today. We'll have a hearing at council meeting in Tonia with proposed, would expect recommended adoption. And then we have to swiftly expedite it over to our friends at Lofton by the end of the month, by July one.
Any questions?
That's a number one. That, when you were talking about, there are some dollars that could be used for some flexibility. Are those the program dollars that you were talking about, you know, if there were some minor improvements?
So not a mapping, the, the funds that feed the transportation program, improvement program are generally shuffled in the three oh seven from growth, so traffic impact fees. Just real quick, program deficiencies and their dollar value divided by the numerator, which are the denominator, which is the remaining units in the system to contribute to growth, create the traffic impact fee. So those dollars are going to those deficiencies. The dollars I was mentioning earlier in the committee of the whole was the Transportation Benefit District, which is the two percent sales tax, which is written by ordinance and has extremely flexible expenditure allowances to go. So if we want to strike a road differently or add some channelization or add some blocking C-curves and those kind of controls, those are completely fungible now.
So some of the projects, and I brought this up before, some of our most major projects need to be underestimated, you know, even based on what we're experiencing right now, Third Avenue for, I mean, it's about three times more than what it's listed. And so I'm, how long before we would have an updated, you know, after we do the transportation element of the comp plan where we could get, it feels like that's a really long way down, and we might miss all of this construction activity. And so, and then we would never be able to collect. You know what I mean? Like we might miss the opportunity, I mean, you, there's just a window of this.
Quick, yeah, one second, and I'll get a quick indication.
Yeah. Because I know people are looking at some of the dollar amounts, like several of the projects. And then one of the projects that's on there that we've sort of started working on, I think we allocated some money to have an engineer just to give us some ideas on when we'll do ball and Main Street. And I don't know if you've ever heard that about that, which I know you're so busy, so I'm complaining, but just curious.
I believe that was mentioned possibly to City Administrator McNabb. And we have a finalized document with some options on it, and that will be just carved off some time in a calendar and presented. So it is not, it's long, lost, or forgotten, but I just wanted to make note for the record here.
So I think our fee right now is nine thousand five hundred.
That's what I'm following.
Yeah, I wrote it down, nine thousand. It was like ninety-five hundred dollars. Now I don't know where I wrote it.
Traffic impact fee, in twenty twenty-three, it's ten thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six.
Oh, and during that, when you showed me, so for clarification on the transportation impact fee, it is, can you remind everyone what that is indexed to?
Oh.
To make sure that we're accommodating for increasing costs like we do with every other impact fee.
Yeah, that one is indexed. At the top here, but the two-year average engineering news record cost index, so it is indexed. We can, as an agency, go through a process, however often as we want to, re-update construction and preliminary level estimates of projects, which is not a bad idea. And I would imagine the comment, the comment I heard too relative to comp plan, but one, let's successfully get in contact with someone, fingers crossed, people bring some smittles. And two, we want to hire those folks, and then three, we can get the work done. I mean, it's kind of a tail that bites the dog, where your comprehensive plan, depending on how and what it does relative to growth and housing, we then fit in the transportation parts. It's kind of important up front, but it's kind of vetted out at the end after we pick what zoning changes, if any, comes out of the comprehensive plan process. So yeah, it might be towards the end of the two-year period. But we do have a high number, I know there are several out there that are higher. There are justifications for your fee, and again, a comprehensive project list of those deficiencies is the best approach to provide your fee. That is the principle. Would be esteemed attorney, like, and any of that, did I miss anything?
Uh, sorry.
So probably at least two years before we can update those project costs.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably not two years, I would think.
I mean, with the, with the overall plan, I would say whatever our timeframe of adoption is, we certainly can look at the costs in the system now and get our consultants to, you know, bet on the estimates and provide an update.
And I just wanted to provide a gentle reminder that councilmembers are supposed to ask questions one at a time and let everyone else answer, ask questions next. So I'm going to take a break and ask any other councilmembers if they have any questions this time.
I'm sorry, I'm going to close this one up. Yeah, it was just a follow-up of trying to, of my original question, just trying to understand, like, the difference between, do we have to wait until the full comprehensive plan, transportation element, that? Or is there an interim of where, because like we updated each year based on indexing. Is there a way to, instead of just indexing, do a mini update where we don't go back and reassess the housing numbers and all of that complexity, but just say, oh, you know, some of these dollar amounts are not actually realistic?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
A mini update.
I would call it. Yeah, I wouldn't call it an update to the plan. I would say we can certainly reevaluate the dollars and project cost estimates that we need to create a fee.
That's what I'm talking about, yes, like a mini update.
We can, we can do a fever game, I wouldn't call it an update or say, because we're not, we won't, we're not implementing any changes to the transportation element and the product itself, however you go over and vet out the cost estimating processes. You know, it takes time, energy, effort, but certainly you can, can be, the direction.
Yeah, that's what I was, Mark, you're right, it's about.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll move on to the updated number of these schedules, the bill twenty-three dash thirty-five. This is presentation only with Director Linaszewski.
Okay, we'll move on to the update and the schedule of the bill twenty three dash thirty five, this is presentation only with Director Menchessky.
Alright, share my screen one last time, again, Steve Menchessky, Public Works. Okay, so we have a new concession use policy. City Administrator McNabb reminded me, we were chatting, we called him, we said a fee, so nothing real shocking, these numbers have actually been in the handouts prior because I did, when I did the last comp on comp review of rates, I did make note in light of projecting possible concession use that there are a few other agencies that we comped out of our ten or so field comparable. Cities, counties, parks, districts. So Key County, I'm not sure exactly which facility, because Redmond Ridge North does not have a concession building and they charge forty. Outside Park District charges thirty five, Riverdale School District charges thirteen plus five an hour if you're in district. And then charge twenty and five an hour if you're out of district. So all I simply did is put the average of those four fees and added in the school district's fee at a use of four hours of a block to create the thirty seven dollars an hour. No extensive math in that at all. And then speaking, you know, with our attorney, we we chatted about, you know, one hour is probably way too small. Four hours seems reasonable to get in, get your stuff done, train it setup and clean up and and your time to sell there in your one and a half to hour game. And then if you want to throw a full day, you know, you probably don't pay double, but I just did a one point five multiplier. Honestly, I couldn't care less on how this number shakes out, but those were the comps that I found and kind of chatted were the most reasonable to to rate against and then come up with the methodology for the kind of the zero four hour of the block. As a flat fee, so if you rent for two hours, it's thirty seven bucks, if you rent for three hours, it's thirty seven bucks. Obviously for four hours, thirty seven, and then anything over that as a full day is fifty five fifty per day. Simple as that. Questions, comments, we are looking at, remembering the entrance glass, if you roll the door up, it's a really goofy glass setup where it's like maybe this tall and slides and I don't know how you pass anything through, completely defeat the purpose of the use of that structure. Because I would imagine maybe sitting outside the door will look good.
Yeah.
Right.
We could pack the little tiny kids.
Yeah.
Do the windows.
So we are looking at that, there is budgeted money for that, very close with these that we. I brought for.
I like them, I I get the whole, you know, you do, there's no algorithm or crazy math behind it, you just have to kind of look at the comps and the PTSCs I'm a part of that utilize concessions for fundraising, they do very well, so this doesn't seem like it would set anyone back. But it has a bit of that volume as well that you are renting the facility and I I always think that's good, I would just skin in the game as well, so.
Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, and similarly, we we had a little discussion just in general and a little surprise about some of the numbers, there seems like a great opportunity. The only one, and and it's really just more the logistics, because it's kind of like so minimal, but is there a reason why we wouldn't just do fifty five and thirty seven just to make the math easier in terms of collections versus fifty cents, I know this is your back of the nap.
I have a big proposal around.
But that would be my.
Yeah. Councilmember Shaper?
I was just gonna say, like explicitly, makes sense to have the lesser charge for money that was for, you know, single game. And other than that, any longer than that, the fifty five bucks, I think that's a very hopefully minimized staff orders.
Councilmember Supple?
Yeah, those numbers look good, I was just wondering, do we have an estimate of how much income would come in for the course of a, I guess, a season or a year?
I mean, nothing really, and I would expect it to be of non-significance. If we have, you know, you get fifty two weeks a year, let's say a quarter of those were rented a couple of times, I mean, you're not going to make a cost by. So it's, it's just more of like that in the game, use the facility. Makes people treat it, you know, like, like, oh yeah, we gotta pay a little, we gotta use a little, we gotta be a little nice and and move on. But yeah, you gotta sell a pretty good amount of candy bars, you can have Costco discount produce rate to to make a little money, but bags of Cheetos go fast, especially those plain and hollow, so. I don't know why they're terrible.
Councilmember Napton?
Yeah, I mean, when I first thought, I felt like it was, just to be honest, before we had the conversation, I felt a little high just because, you know, we do have still quite a few candy bars and they're really, you know, sometimes there isn't a ton of volume, so you're taking a little bit of a risk. I'm curious if there's any feedback and if there was, that people are like, yeah, that seems, I don't know, it's worth our trouble. If we could find out right away, so I think that was the session we had as well, we'll find out if it's too high if anyone resits it. So we can find out if we get, if we get back kind of feedback.
Oh, okay, so let's say we adopt it and then people are, yeah.
Yeah, versus.
Yeah, and somebody goes making a motion to.
Yeah.
Throw a different number out.
I would have liked.
My feelings that all, so.
I would have liked to see a lower number, I I think it's, what we're doing is we're providing an opportunity for nonprofits to earn money, to serve our community. And, you know, I mean, most of these are nonprofits with parents and community members volunteering. So I mean, I'd love to see something more like twenty and forty, but it seems like everyone else is comfortable, so I want to create a chaos, but I would have liked to see a lower number just to encourage it and if it becomes really popular and groups say, hey, we are making a good amount of money and I talk about, but it's kind of an introductory. Let's get people using it, like with the number is what I was hoping for, so twenty and forty is small, whatever.
So, Mayor Person McCandry? Oh, I'm sorry, the Councilmember Supple had not.
Oh, I did, but I I kind of agree, I mean. We're not looking at a huge amount of money over the course of the year, so. I can't. Well, then you toward giving it toward the, giving any money back toward the nonprofits rather than us taking it in as a you know, small, considering profit or something.
Mayor Person McCandry?
I'm not going to share exact numbers, I was just in an offline conversation though, I mean, this is a drop in the bucket to what some of the groups are bringing in for, so again, I I don't know, but I I hear if we lower it, I just, I think these are good. I think if we want to even out the fifty five, but, yeah, I think. Yeah, I think, oh, we're good, yeah, so I could go either way, but I I felt like these are a good starting point. And if we get the feedback from people that they're like, oh, it's not worth our time, and then we lower it, starting lower. And then when do you get to a point where you're like, oh, we might need to raise it a bit for whatever reason, I don't know, I would rather start just where where it's being presented, but that's.
I just want to make a note that our nonprofits do, you know, our nonprofits, especially in the sports, get significant amount of funding from the corporations that parents work for in their volunteer hours, and it's a significant rate per volunteer hour from the parents. They're already funding these organizations, and so when you have a parent in the concession stand who works for a company that does does this nonprofit work, the nonprofit's already bringing in well over what we're charging for this, just for those volunteer hours, not including the profits made off of the items sold. And again, like, almost all of our our sports leagues are nonprofits and registered as nonprofits, so they're already bringing in money significantly through these volunteer hours. I think it's also important to have skin in the game, but you also don't want to make it too easy, because I think that, you know, it takes a lot more than those costs up in the board to handle the staff time for this. And so we need to be careful over the long run on some of these things. And and I think we need to be careful about making assumptions that nonprofits don't make things off these events. When I know for personal fact that these hours are bringing significant money into all of our nonprofit leagues within the city of Tubal. So that's something that should should not leave our minds, let's be conservative as well, listen, Penny?
Yeah, I was just going to note just real quick that really the the consideration threshold for these fees is kind of improving the city's costs to the city staff time, the current term in the building, annual maintenance costs, things like that. I'm sure that's what those other facilities kind of improve in their analysis, you don't have the luxury of having this in place yet. And so I think at the end of the year, you're going to see how much time do we spend on with staff? Do we have to go out, repaint, pressure wash, et cetera, et cetera? And so the cost for it, and so you should be covering for that, it's less of a, well, where's the paint threshold for these entities? You know, and paint, that's just kind of what we're sliding, so it's kind of a lot clearer than first, you know, you're used to seeing, you know, where that can be really that a passion sound.
I think it is a little obvious, just because, you know, charges are restored and stuff to maintain, and you also, there's a service, I'm not arguing either way or against. Like I said, this is as easy as a job as you've ever asked, I just give you a number, I I don't care where it goes.
Councilmember Napton?
I'll just make, uh, do we have to put a motion to first approve it and write out that?
Yes.
Motion, yeah.
Okay. Oh, are we voting on this time?
No, it's a question, council may, unless we are, need to have.
President Gary Oins, and council would like to vote on it tonight, even. I don't believe we come up with a fair.
Yes, and it was my intent to do either or, sorry.
I just have a presentation on the.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty three thirty five, the update of these. Second. Great, any further discussion?
So then I would make my motion to, I would like to make a motion to modify, amend Agenda Bill twenty three thirty five to move the fees to twenty and forty. And I already explained my rationale, I I, the other thing that I hadn't mentioned is I go to a lot of parks and most of the concession stands are selling larger ticket items like hot dogs, they have refrigerators on site that can be used. And really, because it's just selling candy hard and sort of probably, and you have to bring in your cooler and ice to keep things cold. It's, it's definitely not the most convenient concession stand to run. So that's why I feel about the twenty and forty, but.
There's an amendment on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Great, discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Shaper?
Yeah, I, you know, I I know very little about, you know, what the, like, these organizations bring in when they sell items like this. Or I think the fees that we posted, that we had in the document there were quite reasonable to me, I think about the word. I would be very, very surprised if they would push anyone. Renting, renting them, and when we talked about this, or numerous discussions, we kept saying, and I think we all agreed, this is the trial. You know, and we feedback, the fees are too high, but we do, you know, we'll modify it accordingly, but but it doesn't have to be perfect right out of the box.
Mayor Person McCandry? Yeah, I do agree with a lot of what was said, and I I would rather start about where it is, or somewhere closer to that, not as drastically lower. Because I just feel like it's easier to pull back a bit, rather than, it's always a big shock if people start getting used to the way lower fees, it's going to hurt a lot when we raise them. So I'd rather kind of start here to feel it out, but that's.
Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, I'm excited, I think in terms of Director Menchessky, see back that it's not all that important, I think at the same time, it's not as if you, these numbers were pulled entirely out of the mayor, they were based on what other cities are doing, I know, in terms of the mashing of my companies, twenty five dollars an hour, so right out of the gate, you can actually, you know, you could, I think, to the mayor's comments, or more than double that if you have two volunteers. I do think, you know, the comment that Councilmember Shaper made, it depends on there being a trial and and I know us having the flexibility to come back and adjust it, you know, again, I prefer to start a little higher. My expectation is we're trying to get a lot of interest because there, it's it's that time of year and it's an opportunity to make some funds with very little investment. But I'm more than happy to revisit it in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Mercer, Councilmember Levitt, or do you have any comments?
Yeah, I don't have a real hard feeling either way, I think honestly, where it stands, I mean, you figure if you're sitting there four dollars, four dollars for four hours and you're selling two dollar bars, you basically got to sell five bars an hour to cover your costs, which I don't think is totally unreasonable. So if it's staying where it's at, I'm not, I I'm not opposed to it kind of staying as it as it is, but I'm also not opposed to lowering it. I think if I had my choice, I'd say, I guess, keep it, keep it where it's at in its current state, and if we need to lower it, because no one's renting it, we can amend it then.
Thank you, any other comments? All right, then we'll need to take a roll call vote, as it looks like there is a division on this, make sure we get it all counted, right? So, Dirk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Mayor Rockland?
I don't. We're not the start of the week, I know.
Mr. Asson, Mr. President, Mr. Shaper?
Uh, nay.
Mayor Pretend McCandry?
Nay.
Mr. Mercer? Mr. Supple?
Yeah.
Ms. Apple?
Yeah.
Ms. Love, Mr. Love, I'm sorry.
Nay.
Great, motion fails, now we're back to the original motion as proposed, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes me on this thing. And with that, we only have one item of business, it's an executive session, and it's gotten, it's gotten canceled, cancel, potential retention under RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero sub one seven, I, we do not expect to have any further business, I would expect twenty minutes. Do you think twenty twenty, alright. Twenty minutes for executive session, so no further business, I think.
We can just sit here and put on video.
Yeah.
I think we just, we just mute yourself and use the. And I can't do room. And.
That you have to go.
I did. That's the part I don't understand, but.
Yeah. Yep, and we're talking now.
I'll just do it on my.